...of the county commission to order. Let's take a quick look at the agenda. Are there any, any other items that, other than those that are identified on the published agenda that commissioners would like to talk about during the briefing meeting? All right, then let's, we'll follow this as our agenda for today then. And are there any questions about any items on the agenda for the commission meeting tonight? Great, all right, well then let's go ahead and move, move forward with staff updates. And we're going to start off with COVID-19 and vaccination updates, and Stacy Saunders is going to lead this discussion.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
As of today, there have been seventeen thousand nine hundred sixty-five confirmed COVID-19 cases identified in Buncombe County. And we have experienced three hundred and twenty-two COVID-related deaths in our community. No. I'm going to try to turn it back on. Let's see. One of these days, I'm going to do it without any, any interruptions. All right. So overall, new cases remain low and are continuing to decrease. Cases per one hundred thousand per week have dropped to twenty-three as of today from forty-one just last week. And then our percent positivity has decreased over the last few weeks as well, and now is remaining stable between two-point-four and two-point-seven percent over the last week. And then today, it actually fell to two-point-two percent based on the update of the dashboard. Our regional hospitalizations continue to remain low and stable as well. And then our metrics that we follow over time continue to be favorable and show a continued downward trend in cases per one hundred thousand per week. Just a reminder that these are pulled usually Monday to Monday, so you see twenty-eight up there now, and that's different than the figure I just gave you because we pull them daily as well. But the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services did not update the dashboard yesterday, so what you're seeing is as current as Friday. And then we'll, we'll catch back up the next time I see you. But you can see here that we did see about a thirty-two percent decrease in the cases per one hundred thousand. Our percent positivity showed a modest decrease as well, going down a zero-point-one percent point. And weekly testing numbers remain fairly stable, although it does seem like the indications from the report so far are going to show a decrease starting next week as we came into a holiday. The deaths related to COVID-19 also saw a decrease from last week. And then the percent inpatient hospital beds occupied by COVID-19 continues to be very low. So all in all, you can see our metrics continue to be fairly stable. We do start to see a continued decrease in the cases. At the beginning of last week, Buncombe County HHS had administered over ninety-three thousand vaccines. And through the dedicated efforts of all vaccine providers in Buncombe County, including Buncombe County HHS, about fifty-one percent of our total population in Buncombe County has received at least one dose of vaccine compared to forty-three percent of the total population of North Carolina. This next slide I introduce to you all looks at the vaccination rates amongst the different age groups. And not much has changed in our seventy-five-plus and our sixty-five-to-seventy-four-year-olds. Both did increase slightly since the last update, with now being over, both of them are over seventy-seven percent. Our next three age groups also increased over the last two weeks with the eighteen-to-twenty-four year olds from about forty-point-six percent to almost forty-three percent in this update. And then the biggest increase was in the youngest population. Two weeks ago, this age band was at just about eighteen percent at least partially vaccinated, and this week has increased to twenty-six-point-seven. So very excited to see our youngest and newest eligible group taking their first steps to get vaccinated and modeling the way for the rest of our community who may remain unvaccinated. And as mentioned in the previous slide, we have seen a jump in those twelve-to-seventeen-year-olds receiving at least one dose. We actually saw a twofold increase in first doses that Buncombe County HHS gave in the week following the opening of that expansion of that eligible group from twelve, for twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds. Our operations were seeing a little over five hundred first doses each week, and just following the expansion to the twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds, we saw that jump to over a thousand first doses. We'll start to see that likely come down as well. Our partners at Asheville City Schools held an event on May twenty-third and reached a hundred-and-seventy-plus individuals through their vaccination efforts. And additionally, with the expansion and changing storage requirements for Pfizer, we've seen more of our private practices, our smaller practices, connect with us for small-dose transfers. And that can be, you know, just a few doses to a hun, to somewhere in the hundreds of doses. And these have included family practices, FQHCs, pharmacies, and pediatricians. We continue to operate our fixed site at AB Tech, and this continues to serve both first and second doses. We are planning to transition out of that site and into the Health Department for our fixed-site operations at the end of June. And specifically around June twenty-third. As time gets closer, we'll have more detailed communications for both you and for the public on that move. But in short, we'll be operating a smaller fixed site at the Health Department in one of our large conference rooms. So while demand has waned, it's still a considerable amount that it can't just be incorporated into the normal immunization clinic workflow. And so we'll be using one of our larger conference rooms at Forty Cox for, for a fixed site, and then eventually transition it into our immunization clinic as regular operation. And then much of our planning and implementation efforts are going into outreach efforts these days. And we've increased those outreach efforts and are scheduling about two to four events per week. And this doesn't include our continuing homebound efforts that our mobile team is implementing. Our upcoming events include Balsam Farms to ensure our migrant farm workers have the opportunity to receive vaccination. And our team will also be heading out to GE Aviation in the next few days. And we have events scheduled for South Slope at the Eddington Center in the coming days and are working with the Franklin School of Innovation on an event for younger populations. We've begun planning with Buncombe County Schools for later in June as summer school and summer sports workouts begin. And continue to plan with other work sites and breweries for vaccination events. So we found a good partnership in the state resource that is StarMed, and you might remember the, that group as well for testing, particularly when desired events or partners want events at the same time that we already have something scheduled or in close proximity, or close proximity on the calendar. We're able to deploy StarMed to administer and support vaccine efforts without delaying events, which has been quite nice. And that was the partnership that we saw with Asheville City Schools, that it was the city schools, the Buncombe County HHS and StarMed, and had great success with that. So a good resource to have. And then just in closing, the days are getting warmer. We've all been waiting for the sunny days and warmer weather to get outside to have fun and get back to the things that we've missed. I've been looking forward to it as well, and I'm thankful for being fully vaccinated and to those in our community that are either fully vaccinated or working their way toward that for helping us get back to enjoying summer. Our indicators are very favorable, and we have worked hard to get so many in our community vaccinated. But if you are not vaccinated, please continue to follow the recommendations. Wear your mask, keep your distance, and please consider getting immunized. If you are unvaccinated, the risks remain for you. While transmission rates are lower, the virus is still circulating, and unvaccinated folks are still targets for severe illness or worse. If you need a vaccine, there's a spot for you at our place, or one of our partners' locations. Consider visiting us at the AB Tech site, and you can access that through buncomeredy.org or just walk in during our operation hours. And if not our site, if another site is convenient for you, please check out myspot.nc.gov to find a provider near you. And thank you for, each and every one of you who have helped us get to this point. Every vaccine counts, and I thank you all for the time today for this update.
Thank you so much, Stacy. Commissioners, are there any questions?
I've got one. Thanks so much, Stacy. This is great progress. I'm really encouraged to see all the worksite partnerships that, that you guys have put together. And I guess my question is, if there are employers out there watching us right now or interested in doing some sort of vaccination effort at their, at their job site, can they, can they reach out to you? Are you interested in new partnerships and new opportunities to do that in the coming weeks and months?
Thanks for asking that, and yes, the answer is yes. As I said earlier, a lot of our efforts are toward outreach. So you can reach us, you can reach out to buncomeredy.org and put your interest there or talk to one of our staff at buncomeredy.org, and then that, that information gets relayed to us. You can also, you know, everybody, my, my email is out there, so you're welcome to email me directly as well. So if there are work sites and employers who are interested, what happens, just so folks know, is that we get the inquiry. We set up a preliminary meeting just to talk through, like, what does the work site look like? What's the number of workforce that you have? And then our logistics team goes in and starts to assess, like, what can we do? If it's quite a large work site with the potential for quite a few vaccines, then we start to think about what does it look like for us to be onsite? If it's smaller, then we start to think about what are the alternatives for that? Thanks for that question.
All right, thank you so much for the update and for the good news and progress that we see happening. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
All right, we next come to the strategic plan update, and Rafael Baptista is going to tee us off here.
All right, good afternoon, commissioners. Excited to be here with you all today to talk about my favorite topic, the strategic plan, and I am sure it is one of your favorite topics too. So, all right, there we go. So three items on today's agenda related to the strategic plan update. As a reminder, we have made a commitment to you several months ago to come to you quarterly to update you on your strategic plan and the progress, so this presentation is part of that commitment to you all. So we want to talk about three things. First is just to give you a general update on the county strategic plan. The second is to have a conversation around values that came out of the strategic plan. And the last item is to kickstart a discussion around a potential subcommittee around the environmental industry stewardship subgroup. So I think it's always important just to remind ourselves of the strategic plan, what it is before we talk about it. It's a plan that was adopted unanimously by the Board of County Commissioners to set a vision and values for the community and for the organization. It has four community focus areas that set long-term community goals. It has three foundational goals that speak to the way that we as a county operate and do our business to achieve the community-facing focus area goals, and that's through thirteen goals. So just kind of reminder of the strategic plan. One of the things I want to talk about today is the creation of a culture of strategy and innovation. In my line of work, we talk about that culture eats strategy for breakfast any given day, right? And really what that means is you can have the best laid plan in the world, but you don't have the right people and the right culture within the organization, that plan's not going to go anywhere. So it's really important that we build a culture of strategic thinking and a culture of innovation, because that's how we're going to implement the strategic plan. That's how we'll implement a comprehensive plan. That's how we're going to implement a racial equity action plan, and all the different goals we have as an organization for this community. So the way we want to do that is focused on empowering and equipping our employees to be strategic thinkers and innovative individuals. We want to be in a place that regardless of what your job title is, regardless where your job site is, you're always empowered to say, hey, I see an opportunity for us to be more strategic. I see an opportunity for us to do things better, and I'm going to seize that opportunity, speak up, and take action, and move us as an organization. speak up, and take action, and move us as an organization forward. So we are launching training programs and support programs to get there that way. We recently had Brian Elms, he's an award-winning author and won the leading thought leaders in innovation in government, come and meet with our leadership team as well as any county employee who wanted to, to learn about his successes in different organizations across the world in creating cultures of innovation and strategy. We'll be launching full-blown innovation programs in the coming months to ensure that our workforce is equipped to make sure we achieve our 2025 strategic plan. So what's coming next? What can you expect from us by the next time I'm here in front of you giving this quarterly update? The first one is regular public reporting of strategic plan progress. We'll be launching sometime in August a public-facing dashboard on buncombecounty.org where people will be able to see our performance measures for our strategic plan and our departmental business plan. You will see actual performance compared to our target performance. So you will know how well we are doing with the strategic plan. We'll be fully transparent, and this is something we're really excited about, and it's really a best practice. We'll continue to do quarterly updates for you all with those performance measures. So they'll not just be on the website, we'll actually come and talk to you about them and give you some analysis so you can make the right decisions as the leaders of this organization. The second is, as we prepare to roll out performance evaluations for all the employees of Buncombe County, you will see that those performance evaluations are actually tied directly to the strategic mission of Buncombe County that's laid out in the strategic plan. We have over fifteen hundred employees. Every single one of them plays a vital role in the success of our strategic plan. As such, we're going to be looking at their performance and the way we support our employees by aligning it to the strategic plan. We'll be aligning racial equity with our strategic plan efforts. So infused within everything related to strategy is equity. One of the ways we're doing this is we roll out training countywide for employees to learn how to do strategic planning and how to measure performance. It's coming from an equity lens. So every time we talk about performance measures, we're thinking about equity. Every time we're developing goals and programs, we're thinking about equity. Equity becomes part of our DNA. As I mentioned earlier, we're launching a full-blown county innovation program. I'm really excited about this, and we hope to have a lot more reports for you all in the coming months about this program and the work we're doing. We have requested as part of FY22 budget, funding for a Buncombe County community survey. What a community survey allows us to do is to go into the community using a third-party vendor and ask the question, how are we doing? Not just generally, but in specific service areas. So people are going to allow us to have a really targeted understanding of service delivery throughout our service departments. We'll be able to understand it at a county level, by area. So how are we doing in South Asheville compared to Weaverville, compared to Lester? We'll also be able to do it at demographic level to understand, are we hitting every demographic within the community the same way? And you're going to see continued collaboration between departments for new project ideas. With that, I want to talk about one of my favorite projects. So many months ago, we were in the meeting around their educating capable work focus area, talking about education. And our library department talked about they wanted to increase kids getting engaged with their literacy efforts. They wanted to reach more kids in a more proactive effort. The elections department says, hey, we want to get kids involved in civics earlier so they understand the importance of voting and also will not just vote, but maybe work as a poll worker in the future. They come out of that meeting, and they come up with this amazing idea, which is we had kids go to all our library locations, which served as polling booths for the North Carolina Children's Books Awards. The kids got to vote in a polling place like they were grownups voting in an election for their favorite book. And then they took it a step late, step above, thanks to our communications department, and did a whole press conference with muppets and puppets announcing it. But the thing that I loved the most was the press conference was entertaining, but they also talked about the elections and the safeguards built in, in the way we do elections. And they talked about the books and how every book that won, you could go and check out one of our libraries. When people are together talking about their goals, their projects, and their ideas, that's where collaboration comes from. And I hope to bring many more examples of these collaborations to you in the future. But this was a really fun one. It's on our website, and you can watch the press conference. I had, I was laughing a lot, so. So that's kind of the general update. Now what I want to talk about is values. So when the board approved and adopted the strategic plan, you adopted five values as part of the strategic plan. And you adopted the actual value, the word, but we didn't do a definition or examples of what that is. So upon doing that, we then took those values, we went to our employees and said, hey, help us understand what these values mean to you. We took that feedback from across the organization and developed some definitions for these values. And the goal is to get some feedback from you all today of, are we on the, are we on the mark? Are we on the right path? And if we are, we then can go and implement a plan that's been developed by performance management, human resources, communications, to roll this out organization-wide. So we can start talking about these values and demonstrating what these values look like in action and start having our employees be able to understand that and live into it. So the first value is respect, which we define as treat others in a way that is considered of their individual strengths, differences, and contributions. Our second value is honesty, being truthful and sincere in all conduct so others are confident in our words and actions. Collaboration, build relationships and partnerships to achieve Buncombe County's goals. Integrity, act with the highest standards of ethical conduct. And equity, create a culture where we eliminate disparities and ensure just and fair inclusion where all can participate and prosper. So I'll stop here, step back, and see y'all's reaction to this, and if these are definitions that you feel comfortable with.
It's pretty hard to argue with any of those. Any comments, Commissioners?
This is a great update. Thank you so much. It's exciting to get to hear stories about the ways this is translating on the ground. So thank you for sharing it.
Yeah, thank you. We're really excited, and one of the parts of the rollout plan is that we've actually done videos of employees whose actions really embody our values. So I'm really excited for us to be able to release those videos so we see how each other, we're living into these values already. So. So that's the general strategic plan update. I want to move into the third item, which is kind of teeing up a conversation for you all to have around a subcommittee. So the goal here was to find ways to increase the engagement of the board into the strategic plan and provide you all with some opportunities to really take some strategic actions around the focus areas. So wanted to tee off conversation around scope, structure, and potential agenda items. So with some goals, some goals that we kind of thought about that might make sense for this subcommittee, this pilot area is really support strategic plan implementation progress. To create a forum for commissioners to really talk through the items in the strategic plan at a pretty detailed level and create, of course, an opportunity for greater engagement and ownership by you all of the strategic plan and really looking at a scope of really looking at the environmental and energy stewardship focus area and really having a leadership role there. So I want to stop here and give you all the space to have conversation around these scope and goals.
Thank you very much. My mic is really.
Commissioner, before you start, did you want us to finish the PowerPoint and then turn it over to them?
Oh, yeah. What would you prefer?
Why don't you go ahead? I think there's just a couple more slides. So why don't you walk through, walk through those and then, and then.
So thinking about structure, a couple ideas that we have put out there is we could have three commissioners serving two-year terms. Items could be directed to the subcommittee by the full board with three commissioners supportive of it. And one option be in the, at least in the short term, having two subject matter experts from the staff serve on this to provide support. And then performance management would provide logistical and staff liaison support to the committee. And then, you know, a couple of questions would be around the name of the committee and the meeting frequency, but just some starting points there around the structure. And then thinking through what are some agenda items? We kind of looked at the strategic, the focus area goals, and then some of the other things going on within the county related to this focus area. So you see some items up there, conservation easement, reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, renewable energy access, farm layer preservation, solar RFP, residential collections, air and water quality and green building. So those are some items. So I'll kind of turn it over to you all at this point.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. And of course, this is just a discussion item today. We're not going to take any action on this. Today, we just sort of like as we brought forward some of the other subcommittees of the county commission, like early childhood education. We had a couple times we discussed it here before we decided to go ahead and then create it. So that's sort of starting that process today. And as I mentioned, the staff had started working on this, and I'd had kind of these ideas in my head that I'd been wanting to get down on paper too. So I think we all ended up having some time to actually start working on that around the same time, because I emailed Avril and said, hey, we should put this on the agenda next week. And she said, we're already planning on it, and we've got, they had prepared the PowerPoint. So this memo just reflects some of my thinking. Parker had some input on it, and Terry's had some input on it too. But this is just very much kind of a draft document meant to sort of share some ideas around what the working group would, what their scope would be. I think it's, I think it's very consistent with what the staff just outlined. Of course, our work around climate issues and renewable energy policies would be a part of it, but then also our work on land conservation, you know, in partnership with the Ag Advisory Board and Land Conservation Advisory Board, taking, taking their recommendations and making sure we can partner with them to be as effective as possible. Opportunities to look at our solid waste policies and are there opportunities to do better on sustainability issues in regards to that important role that the county has? And, and also air and water quality and watershed protection and things like that. So those are all, you know, those are all different pieces that this working group could address. As Rafael mentioned, we've been kind of brainstorming different ideas for what we would actually call it. I think there's been support for having climate in the working group's title, climate and environment, but there's still different ideas kind of floating around about what, what might be the best title for this new, what I like to, I like the idea of calling it a working group, you know, to just, I mean, it is in essence another subcommittee of the county commission technically, but for some reason that has a better ring to me personally. And, yeah, so Parker, Terry, any thoughts y'all would like to share at this time? Just to say, so Parker and Terry and myself, we've all indicated interest in serving on this, but of course, that's a decision of the county commission. So when we, if we decide to formalize our vote on this, it'll be the commissioner's job to decide, you know, who's interested and to make those appointments. I don't want to presume anything, but Parker, Terry, and I have expressed an interest in serving if it's, that's who the commission decides to appoint.
Yeah, just add a couple final thoughts, which is, you know, whether you look at the staff's PowerPoint, that kind of bolted list of issues and, or this, this memo, I mean, there's plenty, there's plenty to do, plenty to work on. And so I just feel like these are all issues from, whether it's the RFP for solar and future RFPs, or helping the Blue Horizons Project be successful, or working on, you know, new water quality policy, carrots and sticks and the like. It's just, in total, it's all issues we should be spending more time on as a county, as elected officials, and as, as staff across the, across the board. And so I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
Great. Terry?
Yeah, I'll just add to that. I really think the cross-setter collaboration is really great, which Rafael was speaking to earlier, and I think that's a really important aspect with this. So we're looking at the conservation aspects as well as all these other aspects that you're talking about and just seeing that bigger picture and how they can work together and making really good strategic decisions going forward.
You know, I would say, I think that the, I think the creation of the other subcommittees we have of the county commission has been one of the best kind of process decisions we've made over the last few years. I mean, I just think the way like the early childhood education subcommittee has worked, I mean, it has, it has just created so much more capacity for, I think, to us, you know, it's not just the dollars that we invest in it, but I think just having that group of commissioners, staff, and then members of the community with deep commitment and expertise. I mean, just, I think having that, that platform has really, really advanced our work there. And, and serving on the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, I feel like it's having, we're having a similar benefits there and getting much better positioned to think about how to expand our work on another one of those, you know, that's another one of our key priorities. And I think that's, that committee is really helping lay the foundation for that. And I think this is a similar idea. You know, this is a, we have, we have ambitious goals. You know, the energy space in some ways is a very kind of, you know, it's not a traditional role of government, but it's obviously one of the big challenges society's facing. So kind of having, having a group that can spend more time on it and work to kind of, you know, we have to, we have to develop the playbook for how we're going to try to advance our goals in this area in the coming years. And we're off to a good start, but it's, it's, I think it can serve a similar purpose there. So just a couple, a couple other thoughts, you know, in terms of things we might want the community to take on and things to not take on, I mean, just in terms of some of the informal conversations, I think, because a lot could fall under the category when we start talking about the environment, right? I mean, that could be, almost anything could go there. I think we don't see this as a working group that would be like a subcommittee responsible for, for like reviewing all planning policies, right? Like, we have a planning commission, we have a planning board, Board of Adjustments Advisory Board. We're going to do this whole comprehensive land use plan and create a steering committee. So I think just sort of like land use policy in general, we don't see this as a group where everything would need to, or think, those kind of policies would need to be under the purview, partly because we have other people working on it and partly because it's such, that's such a big area that if, if that were part of this, the purview, it, it would probably be overwhelming. So, so those are just a few of the thoughts about maybe issues we would want to look at and maybe issues we would make a conscious decision to let other, other public committees of our staff and citizens work on. So, but it's, it's still a new idea, so obviously kind of still, this can be shaped into whatever the commission feels would be most effective. Any other thoughts for now? Again, this is just a discussion item for today, although, you know, I'm eager to see us move forward on this. So my hope is that we could have a good discussion today and then, you know, kind of further refine this and have it back on the agenda at our next meeting. And if we feel comfortable, perhaps we could go ahead and formally create the committee or the working group at that time. And I don't think we have to figure out every last detail then. And part of, as we did with the early childhood education, you know, we can kind of ask the working group to, you know, to flesh out some of the details once it's in place and has a chance to start sitting down with the staff and kind of working to kind of refine the scope of work for the months, you know, what issues I might want to work on the months ahead. So any other thoughts or questions from Commissioners about this concept?
Just, I'm excited that we're taking this up. I would certainly support the three of y'all quarterbacking this. And I think what I hear you saying basically is, is really fleshing out a game plan, a proposed game plan through which we would be able to achieve the hundred percent renewable goal, right? And along with other priorities in the mix. And I would love us to kick that off as soon as we reasonably can, because there is an urgency around it. I think one request I'd have, and probably this is baked in here somewhere, is just, you know, this is a fairly, well, like all the issues we work around, but this is one that's fairly technical, but also very dynamic field, it seems like. You know, like what best practices are is evolving and how we go from like the national level conversation to a drilled-down version of what will work in Buncombe County. So if there's an opportunity to do like, maybe sort of like briefing updates in this space periodically where we're getting a little of that, bit of that education, that would be helpful for me so that we're as informed as possible as we are kind of tracking the progress you all are making. Maybe it's sitting in on one of your meetings periodically, but some mechanism- Maybe it's sitting in on one of your meetings periodically, but some mechanism around that, just because I feel like this is not, it's also a newer field. So there's just some good learning to be done. But I'm very excited to see this moving forward.
Great. And of course, it would be a purely advisory body. So any kind of actual decisions on policymaking or budget approvals would all have to come through, come through the board. So we won't lose any of that, and but I think those are great suggestions.
I've got to remember to turn my mic on and off to do a better job. The third bullet under strategic, you know, specific purpose of the climate environmental protection, and by the way, I think this is excellent. I like what I see, and especially the three of you serving on it. But I want to make sure here, when we talk about exploring our opportunity to enhance our economic development policies, workforce development, and you're in benefit for jobs and opportunities in the clean energy economy, I want to really see us push the curve here, push forward when we look at the African-American community, the minorities. Because where you look at this community being behind in jobs, when you look at what's coming with the jobs in the solar industry and different industries, these are good-paying jobs, they're good jobs, and could go a long way to closing the gap in that. Unless, I just want to make sure that we don't lose track of that in working on this. Of course, as long as I'm around, I'll be there too. But, but I think it's excellent. I like what I see.
That's a great, great point. These are some of the fastest-growing sectors of the economy, right? And so then they're, and they do, and a lot of them are very labor-intensive. It's not just buying a piece of equipment, it's all the work that goes into building and maintaining systems that, that work really well over time. All right. Raphael or Avril, any other comments the staff might have on this while, before we move on to the next items?
Nope. We'll come back to you at a later time with some actions for y'all to take. Thank you so much.
You know, there's last comment.
I guess I do have.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right. So my last comment on this would be, you know, I think one of the challenges around the energy part of this, the climate action part of this, is, you know, this is, this is going to be, this is going to be just a big lift, right? It's going to be a lot of work. I mean, I think even the people who are totally drank the Kool-Aid on this and understand the urgency of it, and that doing it, not doing it's really not an option, I think it's just, it's almost hard to, you know, people talk about like, this is going to be like putting a person on the moon, like this is going to be like that level of work. I don't even think that's the right analogy. I think that's, you know, that was an amazing accomplishment by that generation. I think this is a much harder challenge, because we're talking about trying to change so many different aspects of the way the economy works. You know, the electrical grid that we have has been built over the last 150 years. You know, the way our transportation system works was built over, built over the last 100 years or more. And we're talking about really changing a lot of that over a much shorter period of time. So it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a, will be one of the biggest challenges, you know, our society's ever taken on. And, and part of it though is that we've got to really elevate our game in this area while also making sure we're doing all the other strategic priorities we have as effectively as we want to. So that's one of the other things I'm kind of, I think this, this working group will really help us do, is to kind of pick the places we think the county can make a real positive impact that hopefully enhance what we're trying to do on our other strategic priorities, or at least are very consistent with our organization being able to achieve the other strategic goals that we have too. So, Avril?
I was just going to ask about timing. So we talked about being quick, leaning, bringing it forward. Are you looking for a vote at the next meeting or the one in July? What was your?
I would be fine with doing it at the next meeting. And, you know, if we need to, again, the resolution to create it, it doesn't have to go into all the details about what we might and might not do. I think the key step is to define the general responsibilities of it and to get it constituted, and then that group can do some work to bring back to the board for kind of a more detailed work plan. That's kind of my vision of the process. If we keep it like that, then I think that would be realistic to take that next step at the next meeting. What are your thoughts?
I didn't realize you were looking for a resolution to actually create it. We didn't do that with affordable housing, but we did it with early childhood. So just want to understand which method you were trying to follow.
I kind of like it, just for the clarity of purpose, you know? What is the actual responsibilities of this? And so to me, I think having something that captures that.
Which resolution?
I don't think it's broad enough. You know, we want to do, you know, maybe solid waste, land and things like that. So I think we would need to create some new document that spells out, here's the responsibilities of the group.
We can do one that's broad, and then, like you said, refine it later.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Sounds good. All right. Hey, commissioners, before we move on to the next agenda item, I just, I was just thinking about our meeting tonight. There are, and we don't have to get to these right now, but when we, after we get through with our other agenda item here, I want to add two other things to just talk about at this meeting. One is, of course, we're having our budget hearing tonight, and if we could have just a brief discussion about the commission's intent in terms of voting tonight or voting at the next meeting, I think it might be helpful for us to just talk about that as a body for a couple of minutes. And then the one other item is that there's on the agenda, just a discussion, no voting, but a discussion about the county's hotel occupancy tax. And we would like to defer discussion of that until a future meeting. So I'm going to ask that we take that off the agenda. So just wanted to let folks know about that. All right. Now, I think we're ready to go on to our next item, which is a transparency annual report, and Matt Baker will present this item. Good afternoon.
So this will be the first annual transparency update that Buncombe County's ever had. It will be published on our website, along with a video I'm about to show you sometime before the end of this month. But before we go any further into it, I just want to let Max go ahead and cue up the tutorial video that will be put together with communications and public engagement.
... county's transparency site. Dashboards and reports are categorized into two groups: financial transparency and service accountability. The good news is both dashboards behave in similar ways. So let's start out by taking the Budget Explorer dashboard for a test drive. First, click the Budget Explorer link. The title lets you know you are looking at the total recommended budget for FY22. You'll see on the right when it was last updated. So let's talk controls. In the bottom right corner is a double-sided arrow. Click on that to expand the dashboard into full-screen mode. To the left is a share button. Use this to share the dashboard to various platforms, including Twitter, Facebook, or your email. The bottom center is where you can turn to the next page. You can also click in the center to bring up a list of all of the pages. Now each dashboard has multiple ways of visualizing data, numbers, charts, et cetera. And they're all very click-friendly, so enjoy clicking around to view the data how you like. Let's start out by clicking the General Government box. As an example, if you're interested in seeing the amount of funding recommended for general government operations for FY22, select this box and you can see the amount. For a more specific breakdown, let's go to page three and view General Fund Expenditures. Now you can see a more detailed breakdown of the budget for each department and county initiative. You can use the dropdown filters on the right-hand side to view specifics for county functions, like education, human services, public safety, debt, and more. But let's say you wanted to see the same specific information, but for county departments. Select Performance Management from the Cost Center dropdown as an example. Use these to filter more specific items. Some have many options, but if you know what you're looking for, start by typing in and the results will begin to appear. For example, type in dues in the Spend category dropdown and select dues and subscriptions, then Office and select office supplies, then Park and select parking. Now you can see what the department's budget is for each item. Above, you can click X next to the filter you want to select for more specifics of that category. You can also click the Eraser tool to remove all of the filters. The dashboards all have the same basic control and components. We hope that you will explore each of them. Also, check out the Open Data Explorer at data@buncombecounty.org. The Open Data Explorer is a great link for all of you data heads out there who really want to deep dive into the data sets we have available. And discover Buncombe at discover.buncombecounty.org. Discover Buncombe is a great resource to see what county amenities are neighboring you and how you can take advantage of government programs. If you have questions for an item that you'd like to see on one of our platforms, let us know. Fill out the form at the bottom of the page and submit a Public Records and Media request.
So that video is going to be hosted on our transparency site and on our open data portal, and helps kind of guide folks on how the general usage of all those dashboards. Before we move into open data, Max, could we get the PowerPoint up? Thank you. So we, last time I came before the board, I mentioned that in February, we had adopted a, and formalized an open data policy and procedures. This report, this annual report, is one of the effects of that. Since then, for open data, we have published 21 data sets for this fiscal year for a grand total of 134 data sets that are on the Open Data Explorer. Those topics include tax, elections, and various map data. The site has seen great utilization. We've actually had an eightfold increase in utilization on this site, which is 120,000 more interactions than we had in the prior fiscal year. So it's definitely getting some use out of it. Someone in the community has found it's been used for it. In brief, for our future plans, we're planning on increasing community engagement and open data promotion efforts. The form of that is to be determined yet. It may be part of the community survey. We don't, we really don't know. However, we do know that when we get that community feedback, it's really going to be what guides our data strategy for the Open Data Explorer and for the Transparency Initiative, so that we can kind of put out content that the public wants to see. For the transparency site piece, we'll be supporting the Equity Inclusion Team as they continue with their planning efforts and their data aggregation efforts, but also with the Strategic Plan Dashboard that Raphael alluded to earlier will be helping and supporting that. And then we're going to continue our focus on increasing our search results presence. As we know, that's where the majority of our traffic comes from. So that is, like I mentioned, this will be published on the website in a memo format, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them at this time.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Matt. Appreciate it. All right. Next up is an update on the Rental Assistance Program, and Philip Harden will present this item. Good afternoon.
Wanted to give you a quick update on the Rental Assistance Program that we've been running now. And go ahead and go to the next slide, Max. Once again, these are the programs we've run in the past. We ran the One Buncombe program last spring, and then CRF funding in the fall. So really, at this point, we had expended, by the end of the year, we'd expended well over $1.7 million in assistance for housing utility assistance. And you'll notice at the bottom, the timeline, we'll talk about this a little bit more. There is now another Emergency Rental Assistance Program, ERA P2, and we will talk about that in just a second. But really, we started the ERA P1 program as of March 1st. Okay, Max. And these are current fundings for emergency rental assistance. As you'll see, we have still pending the $824,000 in CDBG funds. We've not received those funds yet. It's still of kind of a bond and contention from state commerce. We have received the $7,97,000 for the ERA P1 funding. Eblin still has some affordable housing dollars available through the end of the year, and now we have ERA P2. And that, that allocation is a little over $5.2 million. And we'll talk about timelines in a minute too, because there's varying timelines now for those programs. And as you'll notice, I think there's a budget amendment on the agenda tonight for the first 40% of that ERA P2 dollars. They're only allocating 40% to start with, and you won't get the remainder of those funds until you have expended that 40%. Okay, Max?
Philip, can I, can I pause just to express exasperation over the, the CDBG funds was originally approved early or mid-2020? Or how old is that at this point?
We got the award letter in December.
Okay.
They were added to the budget in January, I think January 6th, if I'm not mistaken. We had to set up a meeting with them prior to receiving funds. They released some administrative dollars. Of course, we didn't ask for any administrative dollars. All the dollars in that grant are direct service dollars. Finally had that meeting May the 12th. Took three months or just set up the meeting. And then what we learned in that meeting was there's other documentation they need from us before they will release the dollars.
Yeah. Thank you.
And they've had, those dollars actually came out of the first stimulus, so those dollars have actually been sitting at Commerce on a state level since April of last year.
That's what I was, okay. Congress approved it in April 2020. That's right. Okay.
So there's some documentation that we have to get together in order to, to get them to release the dollars. So, ERA 1 and ERA 2. And in essence, the eligibility requirements are very similar, such as the income limits, 80% AMI, happen during COVID, those kinds of things. So they are, they are similar. There's a little bit more flexibility with ERA 2. If you'll look at that last bullet, I think that that kind of talks about the flexibility. The terminology for ERA P2 states that someone got behind or whatever during the pandemic versus was caused by the pandemic. And that may be, that, it sounds small, but in reality, it offers you a lot more flexibility. Let me give you an example. Someone had a medical issue that wasn't related to the pandemic during the pandemic and had to expend money. They would qualify under ERA P2, but not under ERA 1. So that does offer you quite a bit more flexibility. They extended the deadline for ERA 1 to September of 2022, and then the deadline for the funding for ERA 2 is now September of 2025. And one other difference there is the 12 months worth of assistance, whether that's a rearage or going forward for ERA 1, you have up to 18 months worth of assistance for ERA 2.
Using a combination of forward and backwards?
Correct.
And do most of the folks who are utilizing it utilize that full potential? Or for a lot of folks, is it a much more incremental piece of assistance they're getting?
It's probably a little bit more incremental. What we, what we wrote our policy to basically say is that we would pay any rearage that the person had, and for most cases, we're going to pay three months going forward. And then if they need further assistance, they can always reapply. And the reason we did that was because of the fact that even going forward, regardless of nothing's changed, we would have to do redetermination of eligibility at that point anyway to, to issue further assistance going forward. So it was just cleaner for us to, to say that we would pay that three months perspective, and then if they needed further assistance, they could reapply. And we've already actually seen some folks reapply. on March 1st. Our policy guidelines will be the same, basically for CDBG, for ERA 1 and ERA 2. We worked with county communications. We have an application on the county's website. We're in the process of putting the program on the county's Facebook site. We also did a town hall event around some of the programs that Economic Services offers, and housing was one of those. And so far, that program is an hour-long Facebook program. It's been viewed over 1,200 times. Thought that that came out very well. Our staff presented, and they did an outstanding job presenting those services and how we're able to help people. So we had our first report for ERA 1 that was due to Treasury, and we submitted that on May the 11th, and then we'll have to report quarterly hereafter. And then we started working with the Housing Authority. We were contacted by David Nash with the Ashwell Housing Authority. They had an excess of over 400 people that were behind in their rent, and what we did is we kind of streamlined the process for the Housing Authority in order to try to catch those folks up. All right, Max. This is just some demographics, and this was as of May the 25th. We're still, I mean, right now, we're receiving probably 50 or so applications a day still. So we had taken 1,370 applications, and we had approved 507 of those, and we had obligated almost $2 million since March 1st. And then the average payout was around $3,700 or a little over. And then the denial graphics and the approval graphics are by race. Zip code map of where assistance, just a couple points. And we saw this in the other housing programs. 28806 always seems to lead the way with housing assistance with 24%. 28801 is at 14%, 0312%, 28704 is Arden at 14%. And I think some of that goes to show you where rental housing exists in the county, and there tends to be a lot of rental apartments and such in the Arden area now. And the income limits for the program went up a little bit. The AMI went up on June 1st. So just an example, for a family of four, under the old AMI, it was a little over $57,000. It was $57,300. It went to $60,100 as of June 1st.
Let me ask you a question about the denials, because it seemed that over half were denied. What were some of the reasons people are denied?
Actually, not, not over half were denied. There's, of that 1,300, there's still probably 200, 300, 400 in process.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so.
I just saw 13 versus 507.
There was probably somewhere between 400 and 500 denials. And, and what I would tell you is, for the vast majority of those denials, and we're trying to be as flexible as possible, we can't find any way to relate it back to COVID. And unfortunately, you know, the rules are pretty specific. You have to relate the situation to the pandemic. And I'll give you an example. Somebody who was on Social Security for the last five years, and nothing really changed with their household situation. Now, with some of this, we've allowed flexibility. They incurred some costs during the pandemic that, that were out of the ordinary kind of thing. We would hopefully be able to tie that back to COVID, but say in this example, nothing really changed. They just got behind in their rent. And, you know, I, we struggle with trying to relate that to a COVID or a pandemic kind of situation. And that's where the vast majority of denials come from. As I said, with ERA 2, maybe with, they incurred medical expenses, and with the change in terminology, we might be able to help that individual.
So what, the dynamic you just described, that was all with the ERA P1?
Correct.
So the percentage of folks who will be turned down is expected to be smaller with the Phase 2, because of the greater flexibility?
I would hope so. I would hope so.
Okay. I mean, part of the reason, I think, you know, that like the Affordable Housing Committee folks would be interested in this, too, is we've been sort of wrestling with, like, do we need to reserve some of our local affordable housing money to cover legitimate needs that, for whatever reason, the federal funds can't be used for? Is it too early to tell whether the greater flexibility of ERA P2 is going to kind of, really kind of take care of the needs we have in the community, or whether we're going to continue to need to set aside some of our local dollars to cover things that are not permissible under the federal program?
I would tell you that in the three housing programs we've run already, those numbers are very similar approvals versus denials and such. And that need has always been there. Those folks who fall kind of through the gaps, to some extent, that need is always there.
You have the denials broken down by race?
It was on the, go back, Max, about that slide right there, denial demographics by race. It was 28% white, 22% African-American, and 46%, 3% Hispanic, 46% other are, we cannot force someone to disclose race, so what you'll see is large percentage for approvals and denials. They prefer not to let you know.
That was interesting. It's 22% African-American, but in the county, what's the percentage of African-Americans? It's only, what, 4%? 5?
5% to 6%.
It would be helpful to drill down a little bit there and try to figure out what some of the issues are, and if there might be some strategies around addressing those, or if we can do targeted outreach to folks who are denied in the first round, once the second round is open, to see if they might be eligible under that.
So going back to the affordable housing component, we, we had three applicants, Evelyn, Alida, and the Ark of Buncombe County, for the tenant-based rental. Is there an opportunity, though, even if we can't set specific funds aside, to at least communicate with those three organizations, to communicate with their clients, to apply for the new, new funding as an opportunity to offset? And I know we've got great relationships, you know, with all three, but specifically thinking about the Ark of Buncombe County, where resources can traditionally be limited for those families. Is there an opportunity that we can think a little outside the box in reaching them through this?
Absolutely. And we've already provided them with the application form, so that they make sure as they're dealing with someone, that if they think they're possibly eligible to go ahead and fill that form out and get it to us, so that we can make that determination before they expend money.
Great. Thanks, Philip. Appreciate it.
The other point around data I would make is that Treasury requires us to submit a lot of data, a lot more than we actually initially thought. But there's some good rich data, I think, that we'll be able to pull out of that, because we're having to submit, like, the number of people by income and those kinds of, number of people in the household. So I think somewhere down the road that we will have some fairly rich, good data to look at when you're talking about affordable housing.
Philip, I just wanted to ask, again, on something you just, you just explained, just so I'm clear, on the, is it EAP? What's the acronym? Yeah, you're at two funds. In the circumstance you described, where someone's on Social Security, they're on a fixed income through the government, you're saying this new round of funding, what are you saying about this new round of funding for those types of folks?
I'm saying for that group, that if they incurred some kind of expense during the pandemic that was kind of out of the ordinary, then we might be able to help. Whereas right now.
One-time expenditure, not a?
Well, or something that, it doesn't necessarily have to be related to the pandemic. I mean, what we saw early on with One Buncombe, a lot of people expended a lot of money early on in the pandemic, because they went out and bought a lot of food. And so that kind of put them behind. You might be able to use that to tie it back to that, it occurred during the pandemic, and we might be able to help that, that individual.
Okay. But it's a generically cost burden individual on Social Security who's living in a, yeah, difficult situation. It has been for years. That's not, it's not a situation that?
Unfortunately, you're correct.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you know, we've seen that prior to the pandemic.
Yeah.
We helped with funding, whether it was through, whatever funding we may have had for housing in some way, shape, or form.
Yeah. Thanks.
All right. Anything else we need to know, Philip? Okay. Thank you very much for the update. Appreciate it.
As Philip mentioned, on your regular agenda, that first 40% is on the agenda to be approved.
Next up is reinstating policies suspended due to COVID, and Michael Fru is going to present this item.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in March of 2020, a week or two after emergency declarations were entered by the state and by this board, we saw fit to submit to the board, and the board approved suspension of policies regarding the Tax Office and the Finance Office and the Registered Deeds. The Registered Deeds was closed in-person services. However, through technology, just want to make sure you understand that they did, were able to have most services in person through technology and other means. But respecting the Tax Office, there's been a policy in place, approved by this board 10 years ago, where any deed submitted to the Registered Deeds for registration to transfer real property would require a certificate showing that there's no delinquent taxes due. So that was suspended, just to limit in-person communications or appearances between Tax Office Registered Deeds and, and the public availing themselves of those services. So we want to reinstate that. Our Registered Deeds, Drew Risinger, has submitted some paperwork or emails to the local bar. He's not heard any questions about it. We suspect that many attorneys continue to certify anyway through the pandemic, because there is an exception, that licensed attorneys could exempt those transactions if they promised to pay the taxes out of closing proceeds. The other policy was to reduce the maximum amount of cash for any cash on hand in county departments from $500 maximum, I mean, from $250 up to $500. So want to go back to 250, and those have been subject to the Finance Department's control in any matter. If there's no questions, just want to make sure the board knows that this is on the consent agenda tonight for approval to be reinstated. Opening business tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Michael.
Yes, sir.
All right. Let's come back, as I mentioned, let's have a, just a short discussion about the budget. So we're going to have our budget hearings tonight, and once we've conducted the public hearings, we, it is permissible for us to vote on it anytime after that. So we could, we could vote on it tonight. Of course, we have another meeting in two weeks that we could also take it up and vote on it at that meeting. So as y'all know, I sent around an email, just kind of sharing my two cents that I think it would be good to take the time to, you know, kind of listen tonight, and, and then plan on voting on it at the next meeting. But I just wanted to give everyone a chance to kind of share their thoughts on this, so that we have a sense for how the board would like to handle the timing on the budget approval. Have you got any strong feelings about it one way or the other?
I feel like it's prudent, yeah, prudent to hear people out today, and then, and over the next two weeks, via email and phone, et cetera, and come back and vote. So that's, yeah, I guess I would agree with your, your sense as well.
Okay. Anybody have strong feelings that they would like to see us vote on it tonight rather than at the next meeting?
No.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, that's, everybody's comfortable with that, then let's just plan on that. And at the beginning of our hearings or the meeting, I'll probably make an announcement that we're not planning to vote tonight. We're going to, we're going to listen tonight, and we have this additional period of time to make sure Commissioners get all of, you know, if there's any other questions or level of detail you need, then that's, we have that time for us, as well as to answer any questions that members of the community have. I've been getting lots of emails about different parts of the budget, of course. So, all right. Well, thank you very much. I think we've covered everything that we needed to. In this meeting, is there anything else we need to touch on before we adjourn? All right. And this meeting's adjourned. We're going to reconvene at 5 o'clock for the regular meeting.